Good evening, I'd like to call the session to order. Thank everyone for coming down tonight on a summer night and join us for our public hearing on the Salem Police Facility Proposal. This meeting is a special meeting of the Salem City Council Wednesday, June 8th, 2016. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett is absent. Counselor Anderson?
President.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Ben Arves?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson is here. Thank you. Yes, I am here, thank you. Will you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion to approve the special meeting agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Ben Arves to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So the purpose of this evening's meeting is the public hearing on the police facility, and it is our only business on the agenda this evening. So I wanted to give people a little bit of an idea about how we're going to actually conduct this evening's hearing, rather like we did a few weeks ago when we were also discussing the police facility. We will ask those who've signed up to speak, it's three minutes. At the end of two minutes, an amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, a red light comes on. We use both podiums, so feel free to go to either podium, and I tend to call a couple of people at a time so people can sort of be ready if they're going to be next. And this evening, as we did previously, we will have the testimony from individuals, not questions from counsel until the end of that, and then questions from counsel to staff for clarification on anything that may have come up in the course of testimony. So do we have a list of those who have signed up? Okay. All right, I asked for the list because I wanted to be sure if anyone had not signed up, if you didn't get a chance to see the list, which was over on this side, and you wanted to sign up, there's still time. So if you want to do that, please just feel free to come over and the city attorney will help you with that. So we start our public hearing being introduced by the city clerk, and then we'll go to a staff report from Alan Danan.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding the police facility planning process.
Thank you. Alan? Ta-da! Drumroll.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Alan Danan with Public Works. My job tonight is really to set the stage for the public testimony and the council discussion to follow. So I'll review the information that's in your staff report and just briefly summarize the path that we've followed to get to where we are today, and present the information that summarizes the remaining decisions to be made about whether to proceed with the bond, what size and cost the police facility would be if we do. So with that, a brief summary of how we got here. I started here with the city in 2007, and this was one of the first projects that I was assigned to. And throughout that time, I don't think there's been any question about the need for a new facility for our police. Anyone who's toured the facility or followed this process at all, I think understands that our police operate in a facility that they've outgrown, that is inefficient in terms of their operations. They've had to move some of their functions off-site, and we know that seismically it's not adequate for the current estimate of an earthquake that might be experienced in this area. So the need is not questioned, it's just the solution that we've been working on. A lot of that work culminated with the mayor's Blue Ribbon Task Force back in, their recommendations back in May of 2015. And one of the key things that they told us was hire an expert to make sure that we know exactly how much space we need for the future for a long-term facility, to make sure that we can find a site that fits that facility, and then to come up with a concept and a cost that could then inform the potential bond measure. So we did that. We hired DLR Group, assisted by CB2, to do that work, and that work started at the end of last summer. At the same time, a council subcommittee was appointed to review the findings as we went along and vet the work that was done. So one of the first things that DLR did was come down and visit our police and do an intensive look at our current operations, and they met with every operational group to really figure out our current needs and what the future growth of the department might look like. And the end result of that was what we call the program of 148,000 square feet. And that was considerably larger than we had been thinking about in previous iterations with the project, and so we spent a lot of time with the subcommittee vetting that number and looking at options that there might be to reduce it, and we'll talk a little bit more about kind of what that has coalesced into tonight, either the recommended full program or to remove the Willamette Valley Communication Center or 911 dispatch function from the building. And we'll go through that in a minute here. The other thing that we did in parallel was develop criteria to evaluate sites to figure out where to put the facility. The three that rose to the top were a central location, the cost to develop the site, and service to the city. And so using that broad framework, we went from 30 sites and narrowed it down to one. And after hearing public testimony on February 29th, the council directed us to go forward with the former O'Brien Honda site as the preferred site, and so that's what we've done. There's been more direction since then to narrow the site footprint to just the vacant O'Brien property and to look at both options that I mentioned before, including the WVCC or not, on that smaller three-and-a-half acre footprint. The other key finding along the way was we identified that there's going to be some off-site transportation improvements that are going to be required, and we've heard agreement that using urban renewal funds for those type of improvements is a good idea, and so therefore we can reduce the amount of the bond accordingly for the, to leave out the cost of those improvements. So with that, we shared last week some details about the two different options, and I'll just kind of run through what the recommended program, including the WVCC, looks like. And as we discussed last week, the, without the WVCC, looks very similar in size and shape, just a smaller building footprint and smaller parking. So we'll look at the comparison at the end, but I thought it would be best to just kind of run through the information for the recommended program, and then we'll talk about the differences at the end. So what you see here, and there's handouts in front of you as well, because I know some of this print is kind of small, is the O'Brien Honda site with the recommended program, starting at the ground level, so you're looking at the plan view, and on the right-hand side is, if you imagine the building as a layer cake and you slice through it, looking at the different layers, just right where you sliced. So the building lays out east to west with four stories on-site. The public function is towards the front or Division Street, that's where the community room would be located, and that's where the public parking would be located to access the lobby and the other public interface functions of the department. The secure side of the operation would be towards the back, towards Mill Creek. That's where there's room for at-grade parking and our Sally Port and all our patrol entrances in and out of the building at the ground level. Just touching on parking for a moment, there's room for 175 spaces at-grade, and then if you go to the second floor, we have a one-deck parking structure that includes another 163 spaces. And the other, so there's two things that that deck does for us. One, it meets the current parking demand. We talked last week about the exhaustive work that Deputy Chief Belshaw and his staff did to try to characterize that. This total parking package meets that and allows for at least some short-term to medium-term growth. It also gives a second level of access to the building, so there's additional access for vehicles at that second level that relieves pressure on all the functions that want to get in and out to vehicles quickly without having to negotiate an elevator or fly the stairs. The third and fourth level are essentially the same. This is where the more administrative functions and the WVCC would be located. And then looking at the site from the southwest, kind of gives you an idea three dimensionally how it lays out. There's another view from the southeast. And then finally, we have a comparison between the two, and I apologize, this is a little bit small, but as we reviewed before, the real difference between these two is the removal of the WVCC in the top picture here. And so what the WVCC consists of is two main functions, the dispatch function and the Emergency Operations Center, or EOC as we always refer to it. And so by removing that from this building, we can save 23,000 square feet and roughly 11 and a half million dollars. There's several reasons why we haven't recommended that for the, or why that's not the recommended program, and we touched on several of these last time, so I'll just summarize them. One, we talked about safety and security of the existing facility. There are certainly inadequacies with that at the current site for the WVCC. This would improve them greatly if it were included in the new police facility. Two, it provides continuity of operations, bringing that dispatch function back close to our police management function and makes it much easier to, for those two units to interoperate. Third, it meets our needs into the future, and we've talked about how it's likely that in our current facility, we'll outgrow it within the next 10 years. There's already talk of more agencies joining in. We currently dispatch for 28 other agencies, I believe, and there's discussion that another dispatch center with basically double that number of agencies could be coming in in the next two to three years. So we've got that growth space provided for here, and I know the chief told me that when polling those member agencies and the future potential member agencies, they were all in support that this was the right place for the WVCC and for that function. And then the last thing, just summarizing some information about the cost of the facility and the payback, I think what we saw is that on a per-square-foot basis, the most cost-effective way to build the facility is to do it inside a larger construction project where you can take advantage of economies of scale. If you decide to build it standalone or later in the future, those costs go up, and that cost is borne by the taxpayers and all of the, all the folks that pay into those member agencies that use the facility. The other thing that I forgot to mention is by removing it, you do save 40 parking spaces, so that's part of the cost savings, the 11 and a half million dollars difference between the two. So the two, the cost information is summarized in your staff report. The recommended program is almost 82.1 million. The reduced program without WVCC is about 70.6 million. I do want to point out that we've done just enough work to understand the concept and everything that goes into the building so that our independent third-party cost estimator had enough details to really go through the cost and make sure all elements are accounted for so that we have confidence going forward. We've also accounted for appropriate cost escalation and contingencies and everything else, knowing about how the project wouldn't start until after the bond passes, and so thinking about the time that goes with that. So with that, staff is here and representatives from our consultant team to answer any questions. We've got, again, the consultants, Public Works, police, and finance available to answer any questions either now or after the testimony, whichever you like.
Excellent. Thank you very much. What we're going to do is to proceed to public testimony and then circle back to questions of staff after that. All right, the magic list is here. All right, we have several people signed up. I'm glad to see this interest from the public. We'll start with Dan Wellert and Raquel Moore-Green. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm here tonight to kind of call on council, just talk directly to you guys. I've been following as this planning of the new size of the new building the department needs so bad, so I've been at the work sessions, at your council meetings, and I've continued to hear the same requests, to a lot of the same questions from DLR, the department, the city, hearing a lot of the same things. Why do we need so much parking? Why does the building need to be so big? You know, DLR nationally plans these for all these other cities. I just ask to really try and take what they're telling you guys to heart. We don't want to make it too small. It's just going to hurt us in the future. One other thing I wanted to mention was, again, even last week, there was the mention of the OSP headquarters out on Corden Road. It's not even comparing apples to oranges, it's comparing apples to pine trees. I don't know if maybe you guys need to go on another field trip, go out to OSP on Corden, then go down to Eugene, tour that again. It's two completely different uses. The importance of the outreach to the citizens and the education to get the bond passed, I think, is really important. I think a really good effort's been started on that, but I think moving forward to get that passed, we need to educate everyone in town why they need this new facility and why it needs to be this big and why there needs to be this much parking, because the cost is not going to get less, no matter which way you look at it. I just think it's important, the vote needs to happen to move forward. Construction costs are continuing to go up, land is going to continue to go up. Just alone, we're a commercial contractor, drywall and metal studs have gone up 30 percent this year, so that's just one aspect of it. Right now FEMA's doing the Cascadia Rising exercise. It's the largest FEMA exercise in the U.S. One of my concerns is this building or a lot of the, around Salem, I think a lot of people don't realize how bad it's going to be if a 9.0 hits off the coast. And I definitely don't want our department in a pile of rubble because a lot of us are going to need help. As a citizen of Salem, I'd be happy to forego a few Starbucks a month to support our department, which is one of the best in the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Raquel Moore-Green, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Following her will be Ryan Gale.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, my name is Raquel Moore-Green, and I reside at 1557 Webster Drive Southeast here in Salem. My husband and I have been residents in the city of Salem for the last 21 years. Currently, I am a member of the Budget Committee here for the city of Salem, and I would like to add an encouragement to the counselors and you, Mayor, to move forward this project. I believe Dan pointed out a couple of good items that I don't have in my comments, but what I do want to share with you as a Budget Committee member, I was really, I had to talk to the chief about this, to be quite frank with you, and I made an appointment with him, which was a real bold step on my behalf, because as a role as a Budget Committee member, I take it very seriously. We sit here and we look at the needs of the community, and we weigh that against the revenue that we have, and it's important to take these matters seriously. He was gracious enough to take my request for a meeting, and we visited that morning, and we worked through the questions that I had around the budget, not only the cost of the facility, but what is the long-term impact to our budget as a city? And I came away satisfied that this is a reasonable request, an obvious need, but by no means unreasonable. He satisfied my questions, not only the initial ones around, you know, what it's going to cost, but the long-term monetary concerns that I had. And as a Budget Committee member, I feel confident that the proposed project is fiscally sound now and into the future, and I would, I recommend to you and I urge you to move forward this project. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Thanks very much. Appreciate your testimony. Ryan Gale, followed by Dan Clem. And I do need people, by the way, to give your address or your ward on the signup sheet. Mostly it's just zip codes, and I think we need to capture that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counselors. My name is Ryan Gale, and I live in Ward 7. I am a current senior at Willamette University and a future student at the Atkinson Graduate School of Management. I am a strong supporter of community safety. I believe that constructing a new police facility is not only a logistical necessity, but one of the most important investments we can make in our community's future. During my sophomore year of college, I had the opportunity to participate in the Salem Police Department Citizen Police Academy. The program, for those who are unfamiliar, is a 14-week program designed to inform and educate citizens regarding police practices and services and to enhance relationship between the police department and the community. As I went to the police department for weekly meetings, I observed the facility appeared very cramped and impractical in design. Having also toured the Willamette Valley Communication Center during the program, I also became aware of the building's potential safety risks. I observed that the center was surrounded by breakable glass windows. These windows provide inadequate protection for one of our region's most important safety resources. For those who have spent any time in the current Salem Police Department building or the 911 center, it is clear that a new police facility big enough to house 911 center is needed. One major justification for a larger facility investment is the importance of protecting our 911 services. Salem, as well as many other cities, need the 911 center to be operational 24/7. If the center were to be damaged in a targeted attack, accident, or natural disaster, many cities could temporarily lose their 911 services. If this were to happen, many lives could be at risk. Additionally, the Citizen Police Academy is providing insight into the incredible service police provide to our community. Enforcing our community's laws is a dangerous line of work and is also a very thankless line of work. However, despite these difficulties, members of the Salem Police Department still wear their uniforms every day and work tirelessly to keep our community safe. I believe that Salem community needs to make every effort possible to ensure that police are supported with safe and properly maintained facilities. The proper planning of a new police facility will help to ensure that Salem police have the space and resources necessary to effectively do their jobs and that our 911 services are protective. If we avoid making this decision today, it will still have to mean the future, but at a much higher cost. Working to create a new facility is not just an investment in the safety of current and future Salem residents, but also a way to show our support for the men and women who work tirelessly to keep our friends, families, and communities safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Dan Clem, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors. It's good to see you again. I am Dan Clem, still a resident of Ward 8, representing the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce, which is in all eight wards to include areas outside of Salem. So proud to be here representing over 1,200 businesses and over 46,000 employees in this region. Business is important to this community, and important to business is the safety and security and certainty of how the city moves forward. The city has enjoyed a good reputation for being able to thoughtfully think about and put before the voters the needs that the community has for the future, and you're proceeding along that lines in a very thoughtful fashion. The Salem Chamber is strongly in support of the new police department facility. We have met over seven times, have provided over 50 pieces of testimony in these public hearings to indicate things that we recommend that you think about, and from a business viewpoint, you are thinking about them and have made good decisions. We would ask that you move forward this year, that you deliberate tonight or soon, and then put the matter together so that it can go to staff for preparation in the summer months and be on the November ballot. We believe that strongly that this is right for the community, that the city's solid reputation of thinking about what it needs, finding ways to pay for it, and then asking the voters to vote, has a great track record with previous bond measures, and that this one would be an important one moving the city forward. The sizzle video recently completed shows in an emotional and sizzling manner what Salem really is, all the things that there are to do here. There is something for everyone, and part of what we'd like to add to that sizzle video someday is showing how safe and secure our police department keeps us and that we back them up. We back up the officers and the staff who have our backs, and so we'd love to add that to this. We'd like to be able to brag that we have a world-class police department now. We'd like that world-class police department to have the kind of facility that we need to keep citizens safe and businesses thriving. We're attracting young professionals to the area. They need safety and security along with quality of life. It, also want to ask that you take a look at how the bond is put together in a manner that stabilizes property taxes and something that's certain for businesses and for people to count on, and so as you go through those discussions, please take a look at how bond measures will drop off of property tax statements in six years and how you can find some creative ways to keep those costs as low as possible. But again, we would urge that you move forward and that you do it now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony and your time. All right, Laura Morat, followed by Jerry Thompson, and then Ian Levin. Ian Levine. Where is Ian? Is he there somewhere? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight. For the record, my name is Laura Morat, and I'm a resident of the city of Salem. In full disclosure, I am also the daughter-in-law of a retired LAPD robbery and homicide detective, so there's a little bit of disclosure there. My husband and I live at 3155 Azalea Drive in Candelaria. My two adult, two of my three adult children also reside in the city of Salem, as well as two of my grandchildren do. For 28 years, my husband and I have been in the construction company specializing in custom homes and building as well as remodels. And with my building experience and background, I know the importance of having a plan and most importantly, a budget when you're undertaking a new project. I also know the importance of making sure that your end product, project accomplishes your goal and your vision. Too many of times, we've seen projects that have been built, and within two or three years, the owners have outgrown the project, and we need to be sure that we build a police facility that we will not outgrow. I understand we need to be visionarily wise with our structure as well as being good stewards with our taxpayer dollars, and understand that there's discussion regarding whether we should add the 911 call center to our current project. Well, with the lens of a builder, I'm in support of the upfront expense. We must understand that the best time to make these decisions is upfront, when the building starts, not years down the road when we have to tear down and remodel and have more costs. The price for the addition will never be as low as it is today. Things are only going up, so we need to make that decision now. We need to look to the future and the future of the growth of our community. Finally, in closing, I want to say that the police facility is not being considered by any means because of the officers are complaining, far from it, even though they have every right to complain. I had the opportunity to tour the facility, and I was ashamed and I was embarrassed of the conditions that our officers had to work in. I have more showers in my personal home than the officers do in their entire police department. They do not even have room to pass each other in the hallway without bumping into each other. Their SWAT team locker room is probably a 10-by-30 room that the officers can't even bend down to put their boots in without knocking the other officer over. You know, it's important to know that the officers don't want the facility because they're complaining. They need the, they need the facility so that they can do the job that they need to do to protect and serve, which they have done for our community for years. And so please don't consider building this facility out of pity. Consider building this facility because our officers deserve it, because they protect and they serve our community for years. So I appreciate this time to testify, and once again, I'm in full support of this police facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry Thompson, followed by Ian Levine.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm Jerry Thompson, and I live on State Street. The street in front of my house is in the city, but I'm close. I'm a retired police officer with the Salem Police Department, and I joined the department in 1968, obviously in the old city hall. And it was very interesting working in the old city hall. We had part of the front, part of the first floor and the basement. The part of the first floor included the jail. The communications unit, the dispatcher and everything, was in something that looked like a closet, maybe half the size of a small bedroom. And they had one dispatcher, one telephone operator, and a supervisor. It was really interesting. The city looked like a little differently at that time in '68. We had, we usually would send out about maybe six officers. You'd have two south and two north, and one in the middle, and a supervisor. That was the City of Salem at the time. In 1972, of course, we moved into this new facility, and it was huge compared to what the size of our department was at the time. But that didn't stay that way very long. Our communications center was located right in front of the main door to come in, and it was open to anybody. There was a counter in front. There was no security at all. But that area soon became needed by the records department, so we got moved into what was then the shift commander's office, which is a glass enclosure right behind that. And it didn't take much longer to move us a little further back. So, anyway, after I retired, they moved into part of the old jail. The jail had gone away, so they moved into part of the jail, and they stayed there for several years, until they moved to where they are now. The 911 agency is, as you know, serves 29, 911 agencies within Marion-Pope and Lincoln County. And I feel that it's very important for that agency to be associated in the same building as the other, as a police department, for coordination as well as security. These are simply, oh, there's some examples of what's wrong with the building now, but I won't go into that. The police department, the city hall was built by people that were building, an office building, not a police department. So, it's very important that you look forward to using the knowledge and expertise of the people that know what, how to build buildings, police buildings, and that you include the 911 center in your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Ian Levin, followed by Cindy Larassar. I'm going to learn your new name. Welcome, Ian.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Ian Levin, 2741 19th Street is the mailing address, but I live in Ward One. I wanted to speak this evening on a different venue regarding the police station, and there's been a lot of focus on cost. Cost of, with the call center, without the call center. I'm more concerned about the cost going forward without making a decision, the cost of trying to maintain a defunct facility. And coming from a real estate background and doing property management as a profession, I can tell you from my expert experience that a facility that has outlived its useful life and has a certain level of deferred maintenance cannot be reinstated to be financially viable for an organization. Of course, you're talking about profit and loss from an investment standpoint for real estate investors, but it's the same thing for the city. The city is a corporation. They own the piece of property. They have one of their departments in that. That is a cost to them, which trickles down to a cost to the citizens. So, if we look at this facility that we have now, and as the prior gentleman stated, they moved in in the late '60s, early '70s, by all standards of today's measure, that facility has outlived its useful life. You could talk to a CPA about tax depreciation on real estate. They use a 39-year useful life on buildings before they consider the capital improvements fully depreciated or used. And we all know that America builds some pretty good buildings, so they last a little bit longer than 39 years in general, but as far as the wear and tear on them. So, when looking at this facility, looking at the cost of not doing something or doing just part of, there's going to be too much burden on the city down the road, and we're talking 20 to 45 years out, not in the next five to 10 years. So, and that's another issue of cost that a lot of, I think, the public forgets, is we're used to looking at the 10-year horizon on investing our money, not the 45-year horizon on facilities that are a part of our infrastructure. It would be like expecting our roads to pay us back in 10 years. It doesn't compute. So, I ask you to weigh the costs of not moving forward as too great, in that you have my support, you have our company's support, and you have our employees' support for a full bond measure, including the call center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cindy, how do I pronounce your new name?
Lanasar.
Will you say it again?
Hi, my name is Cindy Lanasar. I live at 4055 Atlanta Avenue. I'm here in favor of the council moving forward with the police facility to include the 911 dispatch center and move that to a ballot in November. There are many reasons for you, as our elected officials, to make critical decisions for the health and safety of Salem, for everyone that lives, works, and plays here, and none is more critical at this juncture than moving this facility forward. In all situations, when you make a decision, you have to gauge the cost of that decision and the project, and how that's going to affect the livability of Salem. With all that in mind, building costs, as you've heard and know, are not going to go down. We can only look at the rationale of past councils and their decisions to reduce costs for later councils to go back and fix the mistakes of the past. Take a look down at Kubler or Commercial right now. We are in an infrastructure situation down there that is costing us more today to the tune of millions, when it could have been done properly less than 15 years ago. Construction is a big cost, and we must not lose sight of that, but there is an extraordinary soft cost to consider as well. As a nonprofit leader in this community, we are asked to co-locate our services with other providers to save costs and enhance our service delivery. These asks not only come from our community, but they come from our funders, federal, state, and you, as well, a local funder. They know that by saving on infrastructure, more funds can be put towards the community needs. For this reason, I ask you to consider and move forward with the co-location of the 911 call center with the police facility. Facility costs are high, and they're huge in when you're looking at the budget. You have to budget for the mortgage or the lease. The facility maintenance, electricity, internet, heating, cooling, janitorial, grounds, administration, and the list goes on and on. By co-locating the dispatch center with the police facility, we will immediately see a cost savings in these areas. And over time, the savings will be paying huge dividends for future councils to invest in future city needs. So, in conclusion, the costs of this facility are large. However, the strategic planning for future growth of Salem is huge, and I urge you not to make the mistake of looking too short into the future. Savings will be seen, efficiencies in services will be realized, and Salem will be an appealing place for businesses seeking a safe, secure community to grow their businesses in. Take action. Don't wait for the next council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. All right. Jeffrey James, followed by Casia Quillinen.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. We're going to bring up a couple of slides. I'm also, and I've been watching this for nine years, I'm a strong supporter of the Public Safety Bond Measure, as we like to call it. And the, I feel that it's important, as we have in the past, to include public safety and the strengthening of this building as part of the bond measure, in order to make it more attractive. My main point is that we need this to pass. Alan, could you move to the next one? And I'd like to bring up the June 1 staff report, the cost summary, next one. And you see there, there's the, we have the two options, the $83 million full meal deal or the 71 without the 911 center. Next slide. And last Wednesday, the work session, we got the poll results, which indicate that it's maybe doubtful. It's 50/50, 52 to 48, whether that, either one would pass. So, next. So, we were all here in June 3, 2013, and we heard a similar presentation from the consultants and the staff about a proposal. Next one. And they started that with, they referred back to in 2011, the council task force set the criteria at 75,000 square foot building, 210 parking spaces, and we need four to 10-acre site. I think we're at three acres right now, three and a half acres, so we're under what's required. Next slide. So, they came up with this graphic, this analysis of the O'Brien site, and police headquarters, 22 million. They had seismic upgrades, 15 million, and a total of 55, 55.8. I think a level like that, in terms of what I've heard from people in the public, that if you keep it under 60 million, that's likely to pass. If you get much over that, it's unlikely to pass. Next slide. So, there's surface parking, 210 parking spaces, 75,000 square feet, which we've assumed for years, three-story building. Next slide. So, my recommendations are, we determine that the 83 is too expensive, unlikely to pass, determine that 72 is also unlikely to pass, adopt the June 3 staff report, and place the $55.8 million Public Safety Bond Measure on the ballot. Next slide. And if we want to reduce the cost further...
I'm going to draw your attention to the fact that your three minutes is up. So, can you quickly summarize, please?
Yeah, next slide, Alan.
No, summarize, please.
Okay, just the last slide. My summary is to go with the bond measure, even defer to the spring, and keep the cost under $60 million, which is my sense is that the public would support something at that level, but not at 80. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name's Casia Quillinen. I live in Ward One, and I've been before this body many times on this issue, and I hope this will be the last one. I've attended and/or watched every single presentation that has come about on this particular issue. And at first, I was very much against having the 911 call center included in the proposal, and I have changed my mind after the last presentation you had on the finances and the actual amount of money that it was going to cost to build a standalone facility or keep it where it is. So, having said that, I now think that it's very much time for you all to make a decision and move forward with what I'm now calling the full meal deal, 148,000 square feet. Get it on the board, get it done, get it moving. Stop dithering around. You know, a lot of time has been spent trying to micromanage and make sure that we have every single detail right. Those details will come along as the process moves forward. That has been my experience with being on city council with major work projects. You can't determine it all right now. It will happen over time. I would suggest that you do include the community room. The reason for that is there is a lack of community room space in Salem, a serious lack of community room space. And secondly, a community room in the police department gives the public an opportunity to see what their police department is like in a friendlier sort of fashion. We want to do, we have an excellent reputation for community policing in this city, and we want to continue that. And one way of doing that is by drawing the public into the building itself and seeing the building as a friendly place to go. So, I would suggest that the cost of including a, you know, 4,000 or 5,000 square foot community room, which can double, is minuscule compared to the overall cost of the whole thing. The last thing I want to say is that there's not enough time to educate the public on a bond measure of this size, between the time you make a decision in July and the time it gets on the ballot in November. And I'm very, very disappointed about that, because I think that if it goes into next year, you will not get a police facility for the next 10 years. I think that is the reality of how this is going to go, what with the council change in January, and a whole lot of other factors that'll come into play. You'll have lots of opportunity for the public to do what Jeff says and mobilize against a larger bond. And explaining bonds to the other 146,000 people out there is a real challenge. For those of us who know about bonds, the 2,000 of us who pay attention, it's not so bad, but you still have 146,000 people, other people. So, that's all I've got to say.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. All right. Next is Brian Hines, followed by Lloyd Chapman.
Brian Hines, 10371 Lake Drive, southeast Salem. We know the question that happens after every predictable disaster. You guys knew this was coming. Why didn't you do something about it? And that's the question those people of Salem will be asking if you don't do anything about the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake that you know is coming, and you're not doing anything about it. City Hall definitely will pancake in the earthquake. That's why you want to move the police facility out of the city hall, out of the ground floor here. Back in 2013, your senior manager at the time, Linda Norris, said, "The way it is right now," meaning right now, as in right now, city employees wouldn't even be able to get out of the building alive, much less use the building. But getting the police department out of this building still leaves the civic center staff and visitors, including children at the library, at risk. You know this because the same presentation that Jeff showed you had this slide called Seismic Problems back in 2013. And it said, "Police are on the ground floor of a seismically deficient building." This building that you're doing nothing about. Moving police to a new facility does not solve seismic deficiencies at City Hall, parking structure, council chambers, the atrium roof, and the library. So, that's where we are. It's crazy to move the police department out of City Hall into a new fancy, overpriced, oversized building, move new people in, and those people are going to be the ones that are going to be crushed to death, not the police department. I'd made a video about this, take six minutes, Strange Up Salem Facebook page, where there's more detail with all the charts, all the facts about this. Knowing that it was that crazy, in 2013, you wanted to make seismic upgrades part of a Public Safety Bond, along with a new police facility. And as Jeff has already shown that slide, the O'Brien site was cited. You had $56 million. You had $36 million for a police facility, $20 million for seismic upgrades and other improvements to City Hall. But that went by the wayside after the size and the cost doubled to 148,000 square feet. So, now, the question is, do you guys want to be asked that question, you knew this was coming, you did nothing, by relatives of children crushed to death at the library or city staff killed when City Hall collapses in the Big One earthquake? You know you can save lives. You know that you can take away the money for the 911 center. There's $11 million. You know that city staff have told you that the cost of making these seismic improvements is $27 million. That leaves $16 million if you don't have the 911 center, which is good for another 10 years. You can take $16 million either out of the cost of the 140, or now 123,000 square foot police facility, or you can add it on to the $83 million bond and make it a round number of 80, $99 million, and say, for this extra 16, 17 million, you get a safe City Hall, you get a safe library, you get children's lives saved, you get the lives of staff saved. And I think the public would go for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony. And next is Lloyd Chapman. And he'll be followed by Suzanne Kotzwaler.
My name's Lloyd Chapman. I live in Ward 3, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the two options that are before you and in support of a, of a measure that would also provide seismic upgrades to the civic center. Bring a particular perspective to that because the bonded indebtedness of this community is not simply the bonded indebtedness that the city incurs. It's also that that's incurred by the school district, by Marion County, by Polk County, by Chomacata Community College. And as a budget committee member for Salem Kaiser School District, in these recent budget hearings, I asked, "Why were we, as a school district, not trying to reduce class sizes?" And I was told among the reasons we couldn't was with now full day kindergartens, we don't have any space in the majority of our schools to have another classroom. If you're going to reduce class sizes, you have to have a classroom. The school district needs money, bonded indebtedness to do that also. As a community, we need to be making decisions that wisely use the taxpayers' money amongst all of those divisions of government. And I believe this very expensive option for one department, one very important department that needs to have a better facility, but this very expensive solution is not the right solution, and it will not pass in November. And I think you need, that's an important thing to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Suzanne Koltwasser, followed by Tim Cowan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Suzanne Koltwasser, and I live in Ward 8. I'm here tonight representing Salem Community Vision. We submitted our written testimonies, and I'm not going to review that, other than to say that we've been following this very closely, studying everything that you've been providing, as well as going and looking in other communities and seeing how they have addressed this issue. And we reaffirm our belief that an adequate, fiscally responsible police station can be built for $30 million, and also that you must do the seismic upgrades to city hall and to the library for a total bond of around $50 million, give or take. We're getting a little loose on the absolutely firm 50, but give or take. And one of the reasons why we adhere to this is that we really haven't gotten a good answer yet as to why the proposal that's, that you're putting forward is costing twice, actually more than twice the square footage of other facilities that have been built, have been built to seismic standards and to similar capacity and similar features. Also, we found out that Multnomah County is going to build a facility for about 175 police officers with all of the amenities that they're going to need, and they're going to spend between 20 and 30 million. Seattle is building a police facility for around the same price, around $30 million. And Beaverton City Council on Monday night approved a plan to build their new police facility for a similar-sized staff and requirements for $34 million. They know something that doesn't seem to have been presented to you. The last thing that I wanted to comment on is that the number of people tonight have given very good reason why we should not have the police in the city hall anymore because the building's unsafe. And I agree that we need to build a police facility and get the police out of here. But we also need to protect the staff in the other departments. FEMA, after Katrina and Sandy, learned one very important thing, that after a national, natural disaster, what kept that community from coming back wasn't the police force. That wasn't their big issue. The big issue was they needed to have the staff and the authority people in place to be able to accept FEMA's help and to be able to restore the infrastructure. That did not happen in New Orleans. And as a result, 50% of their population had to move away in order to survive, and only a small percentage of those people have moved back. 10 years later, they have not been able to address the infrastructure. So, in a major earthquake, it is just as important to have the police in a safe seismic building where they can function, but it is also important to have the planning department, the public works department, the permits departments, the inspectors, and so forth there, healthy and able to get on with their task of recovery. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else? Oh, excuse me, Tim Cowan, followed by anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up? Please come and sign up to testify. Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor, city council members, my name is Tim Cowan. I reside 3160 Dogwood, and I just found out I'm in Ward 7, I think. Here's the reason for my participation. I'm interested in how the project is financed. I was a senior vice president and regional manager for First Interstate Bank of Oregon. I had Mid Valley, Central, and Eastern Oregon. I went from Lincoln City to Ontario. There's about a billion in assets. I approved the loans within the region. So, if this city wanted to get any type of financing, bank financing, I would have to initial it first. When I was in National Accounts, I had everything west of the Mississippi. And so, I feel more than qualified to make a decision. What I would like to do is I provided you with kind of an application, if you will, of questions I would need to have answered for me to approve a $50 million loan. I'm more than willing with that information to come up here and tell the people who are interested or have questions about the bond, this is what I would do if I was going to lend money to the city. So, here's a couple of things if I have time. First, what information were given to the third parties? What review was completed on all parties involved in the construction? Do they have the expertise, financial strength to meet other commitments, and sufficient resources to address any unexpected issues? Do they have enough, any cash flow requirements? Are there any circumstances that would impact the ability to form, to perform as agreed? And do they have access to other financing? I would not approve a loan if I didn't think that the cost was solid, and if I didn't think they could control it, or if they had commitments other places that would jeopardize the project. General, other than this request, are there other financial resources available, and does the city have available ability to generate more funding if necessary without a negative impact on city services? We've talked about the retrofitting of the city hall and all those other things. If one financing source are used, what are the priorities? As an example, spending money for all the other items, and if you, do you have to have all that covered into one bond issue? I would need to know that. Project management, this is kind of interesting because I've really been impressed with our city manager. However, there seems to be some things that are changing in city hall, such as the deputy city manager, contracts and purchasing administration. I would want to know that we provided him with the resources necessary to complete the project. Delivery approach, which I think Mr. James was going to talk about, is I need to make sure that I don't run into the need to finance anything over the loan I give because I'm capped out at 50 million. That was the highest I could go. And it seems like there are certain delivery methods, like, I have a problem with this. I call it project management and general contractors, but I think it's contract management. I'm not sure. But what I'll do is when I get that information, I would like to present it so the people who are looking at the bond issue would at least feel comfortable, this is what I would do if I was being asked to provide a loan.
Thank you very much. I'm a little confused about those lights that are flashing. So, can someone tell me? We have two.
I missed the one, I'm sorry.
Oh, all right. So, three minutes is now up? All right. Thank you, Mr. Cowan. Appreciate your testimony very much. Thank you. All right. Was there anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to testify? All right. All right. At this point, I will close the public hearing, and we will move to questions of staff. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. There's been a lot of testimony in this here, well, some testimony in this hearing, and other testimony earlier, about the whole idea of bond indebtedness and what that means. I see David Lacy is over here. Perhaps he could discuss a little bit about whatever this is per, let's, let's say, the $9 per, per $200,000 house per month. Is that actually going to be $9 addition, or will it be something less than that? Or maybe, maybe Sondra can talk about it, but somebody.
Counselor, that's, that's very difficult for staff to answer since we don't know what the amount is. We can provide some hypothetical-
Well, yeah, let's use the hypothetical of an additional $9 per month.
Well, again, $9 per month for what size project?
For a how?
82 million?
Yeah, for the full million. That's, that's what we, you know, as I understand it, the $82 million project will, will result in a $9.06 or some amount per month for a house with the value of 200,000. So, I guess my question is, will that really increase the taxes on that house? Will that really go up $9.06 per month?
Sondra can explain, I think, provide some, some, some background on how the, the city has managed its debt because that's a factor.
Yes.
We can provide some, some analysis regarding our, the city's current bonded indebtedness, and if the project is $82 million, what that impact would be going forward.
That's exactly what I'm looking for. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Sandra Montoya, financial services advisor. In anticipation of these questions, we prepared some short slides. Bond financing is pretty complicated. So, I'm going to give you kind of the 30,000-foot level, try and keep it really basic, and then recognizing that as this progresses, should the voters approve, or as, as council approves us doing a bond measure, some of these questions would be answered at that time because there's decision points that you would have in this process. So, we've made some assumptions about the decisions that would be made, and I'll walk through those. Okay? So, with that, one of the questions that was asked a week or two ago was, where have we been with the bond levies? General obligation bond levy is what we're talking about. So, we have been at a high in 1985, '86 of $2.64, and that's per thousand of assessed value. So, over time, as bonds have matured and new bonds have come up, that rate has fluctuated. In the last 10 years, we have done a target of $1.01 for the fire bonds and the streets and bridges bond. And you can see that since about 2008, '09, we have tried to maintain a level levy of about $1.01. That's what we have today. One of the other questions that was asked is, what does this do to our bond capacity? In fiscal year 1718, which we're just weeks away from beginning, our bond debt will drop to 60.8 million, and that's because things are maturing, or I'm sorry, debt is being paid down, similar to a mortgage, where we pay a little bit of principal with every payment. The city's debt service is made in December and in June. So, this month, we just made a debt service payment, and our overall debt dropped a little bit. So, we're at 60.8 million. By city policy, we have a cap of 1 and 1/2 of real market value. That's the gray bar that you see there. So, we have sufficient capacity to issue new debt. We have roughly 164 million in capacity, and I'm going to refer to my notes because I can't do this by memory. And I need my glasses as well. Very sad state of affairs.[1488.00][1488.00](Laughter). 161.4 million is the capacity that we have at, at the moment. The lime green bar that you see there, that assumes the $82 million for the police facility. Again, we made the assumption that we were doing the full recommended package, so that's what you have before you. And that's the impact. What would that do to our overall policy limits and also the state statute, which is that dark blue bar that you see there? By state statute, we have to remain under 444 million. So, we're well below it. Okay, so the next one, Alan, please. Another question that was asked is, what does our capacity look like over time? Because we know that the, the police facility is not where our needs end. We have a lot of capital maintenance or capital improvements that are waiting. We've heard that transportation is a really big concern for our citizens. And so, we know in our very near future, we're going to be grappling with streets and bridges too. And so, we also know that fire has, you know, just a constant need, or I should say, a routine need. Right now, we've been going out about every 15 years for a fire bond. So, in the near future, we will have that need coming at our doorstep. So, with that, we're just look at capacity over time. Again, we've layered in $82 million issuance for the police facility, and you can see that, that dashed line is that excess capacity. So, we have room to issue additional debt. Please note, that does not speak to the citizens' willingness to pay additional debt. This has nothing to do with that. This is just how the numbers lay out. Thank you, Alan. The next one. Another question that we were asked was, assuming the $1.01, can you issue debt at a $1.01, maintaining that level levy target, much like the school district did a couple of years ago, and that was minimal impact on the residents by maintaining their debt level at that same rate? The answer to that is, we cannot. At a $1.01, which is our existing target, we have the capacity to issue $15 million next fiscal year. That does improve if we're willing to wait to about '24, '25, so fiscal year '24, '25. If we want to wait until then, the streets and bridges debt matures, and then we've got some tremendous capacity of about 150 million. So, that's that lime green bar section that you see there. And then, again, as that debt matures, we've got additional capacity in roughly fiscal year '26, '27 of 35 million. So, then the next logical question is, well, what do we need in order to construct the police facility? And right now, our debt modeling is showing at about $1.25 of a level levy, you could get to the police facility constructing it or issuing the first debt next year. And again, the assumption that we've made is that you're going to want the same structure that we have today. That does not mean that that's the structure you have to stay with. And this $1.25, I believe, is modeled at about 15 years of a debt service payoff. And when we look at the overall debt, that time period is about the sweet spot where we're paying, I can't say less interest, but where we're paying the least amount based on the other options. So, that's what we, we are showing you today. Again, when we get down the road, there will be a point in time where we would look to council and say, here's the opportunity for structuring the debt, here's what each of these scenarios does, and council, which would you recommend? Which do you want to go forward with? I think that's all that I've got.
And that, that decision, the direction we received was to, to bring that first to the finance committee for, for review, and then bring, obviously, as Sondra just said, to council.
Yes, thank you. And I'm here to answer any of your questions, or I can sit down quietly.
Are there further questions regarding this from Ms. Montoya? Counselor Nanki, and then back to Counselor Anderson.
Thanks, and thanks for bringing this down. We've talked about it a few times at finance committee as well, and there was, as you were talking about future fire bonds and streets and bridges, there was one thing that was left out of that list, which was the additional seismic improvements as well. So, I just wanted to make sure people knew that that is, we are not doing nothing on that. It's a matter of timing it and how we put that into the bonding equation as well.
Correct. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Bednarz.
I understand this is an extremely complicated explanation, but what I think you told me was that right now, at the- was that, right now, at the rate we are assessing and taxing, next year, we would have $15 million that we could issue a bond for $15 million and not change the rate we are charging the citizens.
That is correct.
So I'm sure it's something different than extrapolating from 15 million to 82 million, but, you know, say that's a fifth of it, does that mean that we would not have to charge a fifth of $9.06 per month because we've got that $15 million?
Okay, so I think I'll say it a different way because I'm not following you on the math.
Okay.
But right now, we're charging $1.01.
Yes.
If we went to the $1.25, and let me pull up that number. So $1.25 would be an additional $48 a year using that level levy debt structure. If we only issued the $1.01, you wouldn't have that additional $48. And right now, it's costing that median household of 200,000 about $200 a year for the $1.01. So that's where it would remain roughly.
So if we went from $1.01 to $1.25, it would be an additional $48 per year per house of $200,000 average.
Correct.
So instead, it's $4 a month under that scenario rather than $9 a month.
Correct.
But by law, we have to say $9, we have to give that figure. Is that correct?
So I'm going to pull you back a little bit because I recognize that the $9 a month is a figure that came from finance. It's not inaccurate. It was just one debt scenario structuring. So, and that's what I mentioned earlier, is that when we get down the path, you're going to have a menu of options for structuring the debt. When we originally modeled, we were modeling the simplest and using the mortgage approach that says, here's your payment that's consistent across every fiscal year. What we have now started to model is something a little bit more sophisticated that says, here's a level levy, and so that changes up the payment structure.
Right, and the reason you can move it down is because in succeeding years, we've paid off prior issued bonds.
Yes.
That leaves us more amount under that $1.01 figure to pay off this bond.
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you very much.
Just briefly, members of council, Counselor Anderson, it is not a legal requirement that we include the dollars per month or dollars per year in the bond measure, just the total amount that we're bonding.
And if, I may as well, just want to clarify, we're speaking in specifics with these numbers, and this is all scenario-based with a lot of assumptions.
Correct.
We don't know the conditions of the market when we actually go out to sell, so just keep in mind that, well, the principle of what's happening may be the same. You can't zone in on those particular figures.
So what you're saying is the $9.06 per month is hypothetical and the $4 per month is also hypothetical. Those are just sort of the range right now.
Until we issue the bonds, we won't know.
Right, right. Thank you.
All right, now I need to get back to the list of who all had their hands up. Counselor Nanki, did you get your question answered or did you have another?
I just wanted to pull one piece with the same chart again as well. And that number then, even out at 2024, if you added in fire and another $95 million streets and bridges bond measure, that 1.25 would stay the same all the way through that whole timeframe as well.
So that would depend on how quickly, the urgent need, because if you wanted additional debt, so one of the things that I always say is when you select a level levy target, like we have done, you make it easier on the residents because they don't have fluctuating rates. However, what you compromise is the ability to issue additional debt without negatively impacting people. You can't do it. So you'd have to wait until '24, '25 when existing debt matures, and then you could backfill with new debt and still not impact them. However, it's kind of like, last year, we went from two drivers in our household to a third. That third driver cost us some money.
Yeah.
Not only, you know, a car, but insurance, and so it came at a cost. That would be much the same. Now, if we had waited until we'd paid off one of the vehicles and then added a third car, we could have probably stayed the same. That's roughly what we're looking at here with level debt, is if you have new debt that you want to issue while you still have all of the existing debt, you have to be willing to raise that level limit.
Right, and you can see that in the historical.
Correct.
Bond indebtedness, you know, costs.
Yes.
Over time. But when you hit that bottom and then come in, then you really are asking people to give additional over what we've tried to keep as a flat line.
Correct. If you're allowing the dips and then the peaks, it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt people's wallets. They're going to feel it a lot more than if you just maintained it at a level amount or say level rate.
In that, you were trying to buy a Mini Cooper or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Bednarz, followed by Counselor Lewis.
Thank you. So as being part of the Finance Committee as well, we have had extensive conversations about the importance of trying to keep this fairly level for our community, for those people who are having to plan on fixed budgets or otherwise, trying to keep this as level as reasonably possible. Could you take a second with this and talk about those two little black marks on '15, '16, '16, '17? And let's talk a little bit about interest-only payments for a period.
Okay. Well, interest, interest only, so wait, let me back up. Do you want me to talk about the black lines first?
Start with the first, let's start with the black.
Okay. So the black is staff's attempt at maintaining that level levy target. So we have debt service that is at a scheduled rate, and then we have prepayment options within each of those debt structures. The black lines represent our prepayment options and us exercising those prepayment options. So in '16, '17, it's the big year, we're prepaying fire bonds to the tune of $2.5 million. So in your budget books, the little notes in that budget book show, we're prepaying it down $2.5 million, and that is benefiting the community. We're reducing interest expense by $248,000, and we're paying the debt off one and a half years earlier. So that dip that you're seeing in 2021, where you see the dark blue and then there's like a dip in that, that's the fire bond paying off right then, and the dip is caused because we are prepaying the $2.5 million in fiscal year '16, '17. So that's just prudent budget management, prudent financial stewardship. We would look for those exact same opportunities in whatever bond we issued in the future.
So let's move on to this interest-only payment. If we don't have bond capacity until '17, '18, or actually even 2021, we had talked about to stabilize our payments or stabilize our tax rate so that people weren't seeing peaks and valleys. Could you talk a little bit more about delaying the principal side of this?
So you can do interest only, but interest only comes at a cost. Just like with our own household financing, you're going to pay a higher interest rate in order to do years of interest-only payment. At this time, with the current environment, it's not something that I, as your financial, internal financial advisor would recommend because we are at still historical low interest rates. Just, we were looking the other day, just at interest earnings and how, you know, in our city's history in the last 20 years, we've seen 7% and 8% interest earnings rate. And I was quick to remind the staff person, we were also paying that in our debt, on our debt side. So right now, because we're in a lower interest rate environment, it behooves us to lock in a lower rate and probably not move into that interest only. But again, those are options that council will have the decision to make when we move down the road, but you should know it is an option.
So move into the $1.25 per thousand, that means that we can make our principal payments? Is that what we're saying?
Correct.
So we're now locked into a loan that offers us the lower rates that we're looking for. Yes, our tax rate has gone up, but not as significant, and one of the goals that we have is to keep it stabilized so people have predictions of what's going to happen. But the $1.25 does solve that problem.
Correct. The $1.25 makes issuing $82 million possible, and the $1.25 that we've modeled here assumes about a 15-year maturity. It assumes rates right now that are about 3.75, so lower than we've modeled because we anticipated when we first started this project six months, a year ago, you know, listening to the news and reading that the Fed was going to raise rates, you know, and it was, it was coming. That hasn't happened, well, it happened once, but it hasn't happened at the rate.
Quarter of a point.
That we anticipated then. And so now, because we're closer to it becoming a reality, we can start to tighten in the numbers, and you're seeing the benefit of that.
So my last statement or question, it's question, is, this is really important information to get out to the public, and a big part of what we saw in the polling was, it actually was favorable that the bond would likely pass, but it was going to be an education of the public. Is this information or some form of it available to the public?
So at this time, because we've presented it in public settings, it is available through that avenue. However, I would hesitate to blast it somewhere until council made the decision on a number. Once the number was set, then we could have our financial advisors start working up some fairly sophisticated options, options that we don't have the tools to model, but they would. And I would probably recommend at that point, doing some sort of a calculator, that somebody could put in their household assessed value and determine what that would impact, how that would impact their home.
Thank you, Sandra.
All right, Counselor Lewis.
So under this scenario, increasing it to $1.25 gives us the ability to fund, if that's the right word, the police facility, and then in '24, '25, there would be extra money for, like a streets and bridges bond measure. And that would take us out to 2036, '37. Is that the way, is that right?
Well, so right now, what we've modeled is just through that 36, '37 horizon. I probably would need to look to David to see if that, if that models everything, the full debt service.
Sure, and David Lacy from Finance. And again, this is a hypothetical, so what we looked at with this, we like to operate in hypotheticals, but when we looked at the $82 million issuance, as Andrew was talking about, we modeled that out based on some calculations from our investment advisor as a double check on this, too, and that was looking at about 15 and a quarter years, I believe, for the term. What we tried to do at that point then is backfill and say, what would an issuance look like? So the rate you see up there of 110 is an estimate of what we could afford. Going back to kind of the original way we've been modeling the bonding structure, saying, we're going to actually look at this at a level debt service rate, so saying, those payments over time are equal, what could we actually afford? So then again, if we employed a strategy like we're talking about here, that may be more than 110, it may not. But again, this is all dependent on assessed value growth and a lot of different things in the market, depending on what that is.
Well, and maybe I'll try to ask the question simpler. Looking at this, what it's telling me is that after the police facility, and let's assume a streets and bridges bond measure, like what we had in 2008, that would be it for what we could do for 20 years. And we've talked about a huge list of things that the city needs to now, seismic upgrading of the city facilities is being talked about. So I don't got 20 years. So what do you do to be able to do more?
Do you want me to take that one? So, I don't know, it's tech team. So what you would need to do, I think that you could try and rearrange the debt, like I said, a little bit differently. There's definitely different ways you can look at this. You could, again, we are modeling it the most simplistic way of just saying, this is what your debt service payment, if you're going to have a level debt service payment, would be. If we were going to look at a level levy rate, that would be a way to maybe expand that so that the amount difference there would actually still kind of stay within that $1.25. Or employing the strategy that we've talked about, you could probably maybe get that up a little bit more, but again, you're looking at interest rate factors. I guess the short answer would be, there's going to be a point you'd have to move above $1.25 if you're planning on doing substantial increases over, over that rate.
All right, Counselor McCoy, followed by Counselor Benjamin.
Could you go back to the slide where you had, you had the slashed line, I think, was showing property values going up? Is that factored into this other, these other graphs? In other words, as the property value goes up, you've got more.
Yes, all of the models have the assumption of 4% AV growth in '16, '17, 3% AV growth beyond that. So AV is assessed value, and yes, they all have that assumption built in.
Because, correct me, you've got the layman asking questions here. As the assessed value goes up, the amount, you collect more money per thousand, right?
Correct. The amount per thousand goes, or per household, it drops a little bit.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
So the net effect would be it drops a little bit.
Yes, because you've grown the denominator of the base.
As the assessed value goes up.
Yes.
And that's reflected in the other graphs, too?
Correct, and that's actually what's made prepayment of the fire bonds possible.
Yeah, I get that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Benjamin.
Looking at from 10 years ago, when there's always going out for bond measures and stuff, or always, I was always saying, why do they always need more money? Can't they live with what they have already? Not understanding how the bond process works, that, you know, there's not a big fanfare and a party and newspaper headlines saying, hey, we paid off some more debt, you know, moving forward. It's just usually trying to pass another bond measure for something important for the city. So looking at this going forward, just the person that doesn't understand these, how bonds work, things getting paid off, we're maintaining a certain indebtedness so that when we pass whatever number we pass for the police facility, it's not really going to have a huge impact on, on people's property taxes moving forward, is what I'm seeing.
Under the structure that we've shown you tonight, that is one option.
Right.
So maintaining your level levy target, that, the impact would be $4.28 a month.
Right, and so, and there's a lot of misinformation out there that the taxes are going to go up, people are going to lose their homes because of this, and that's just not true according to way that, how these processes work. But also knowing that back in the 80s and stuff from the other graph, there was a lot more indebtedness.
Correct.
So when people are kind of mentioning, I can't handle my taxes going out there, I'm taking too much money, we're not even taking half of what used to be taken.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to bring that to the public record. Thank you.
All right, are there other questions? Counselor Nanki.
Thanks, just one last piece on that and to kind of address Counselor Lewis's question. We've been starting to have those conversations about what do we really need to bond and how does that play out over the long term, and what do those numbers look like? DAF probably would have preferred not to bring these tonight. It gets dangerous when you start running hypotheticals and start looking at numbers because you can pull a graph that would scare the bejeebers out of folks. But for us to start moving forward with this one, we at least need to look at how the police facility could impact that graph. It's going to take us a bit to try to find a flat line or a slightly arced-up line and then try to hold something for the long term that can just stay there to where we don't have to, where are we when you look at long-term bonding needs for the city of Salem? So I'd just like to thank Finance DAF for bringing that forward and letting people see something that most people don't get to see that often.
Thank you very much. Counselor McCoy.
Serve along the same line, I'm on the Finance Committee, too. It's fascinating. I've learned a lot trying to catch up, but one of the things we've had, and I guess I'm doing this for the public, it became apparent early on as we started discussing the need for this, this bond and then other bonds, and you started looking at the indebtedness, that there, a plan had to be made. So the Finance Committee's been working on this for the past year. How are we going to, how are we structuring these, A, and B, how are we staging them, if that's the word? how are we staging them, if that's the word, to go out to the public in a manner that doesn't give you a sticker shock as you move forward, but still meets the needs of the cities moving forward? And as Counselor Nanki said, that includes fire equipment, includes streets and bonds we're looking at, includes the seismic things, and looking at maintenance here at City Hall, as well as this police bond. So we've been looking at it holistically, not one-offs here as we go through it. And we'll get there, but you can see the impacts depending on what the decision is and how you want to move forward, what it's going to do to those graphs that we've just been looking at. And again, this is just hypothetical. Until you get to the real world, you're not going to really know and have a specific answer for the public. But we're aware of it, and we're working at it, and are best, trying to mediate it best we can for the effect on the public, as they have to pay for these needs for the city.
Good points. Thank you. Other questions from counselors? Counselor Dickey.
I have a question that's not related to this, so I don't know if other.
My feet hurt. Thank you both.
Thank you, Mayor. So we heard some testimony tonight talking about a two thousand and thirteen work session where we talked about some of the needs for the Civic Center. And I'm just curious to, because I remember, but I don't remember, it was, that was a few years ago. Was that an official study that was done? Who did the study? Where did that information come from? Where did those numbers come from?
I can answer that question. So that information was produced as we moved ahead with the concept on the Civic Center campus. The question was, well, how does that compare to if we look at other sites? And so we looked at a same-size building as we were talking about for here, and looked at three example sites around town. And O'Brien was one of them. So that's where that information came from. But the key differences are, not nearly as much was known about the site and how it might lay out, about the cost of the site. And we were talking about fifty percent of the building. So big differences in the costs.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Counselor Anderson.
One of the other things we heard today was that the cost of earthquake-proofing the Civic Center campus was twenty-seven million dollars. I'm not sure where that figure came from. I'm wondering if, and I know we've had some studies done on that, that, you know, the staff, well, the studies done are not in the detail enough to get an actual number. So I'm wondering if we do have any idea what the number is.
No, we don't.
Not beyond what's been shared with council from those earlier efforts.
And I guess the assumption is that, sort of, just like the more, the cost of the police station was dug into the, the cost went up. So I would presume that the same thing would happen here once the city staff and folks really look at the earthquake-proofing cost and other costs, they will go up.
I think the answer to that question is yes. One example is, again, when we were looking at just this site for the facility in the Civic Center seismic, we were talking about removing this building, removing the atrium structure. And so
When Alan says this, he means this.
Yeah, where we're sitting. Yeah.
Thank you. And so we'd need to relook at those assumptions, right? You're probably thinking instead, okay, we need to rehabilit, reinforce this council chambers, make a decision about whether to reinforce the atrium, replace it, take it out. But all of that was going to be demolished in the prior scenario. So yes, the cost will definitely go up.
We discussed this a bit at the last work session. I raised this issue again. At the time, we were told that it would take three to six months to come up with the definitive analysis of the cost of earthquake-proofing the Civic Center campus. And I would urge that we begin that process right now. And I don't know if I need to make a motion, or is the consensus of the council, or how we go about this.
I actually have a motion prepared that I would like to introduce tonight. I didn't want to break into the flow of the discussion just right now.
On the earthquake proof issue? Okay, that's fine. Then I can wait on that. That's good.
All right. Are there more questions or comments among counselors with regard to the police facility? Okay, all right. Counselor McCoy.
Madam Mayor, I move that council direct staff to prepare for council's consideration, a resolution referring to measure to Salem voters for the November two thousand and sixteen general election, presenting the question issuing general obligation bonds not to exceed eighty-two million, eighty-eight thousand dollars for a new police facility and related costs. The resolution shall include as Exhibit A, the total not to exceed bond amount of eighty-two million, eighty-eight thousand dollars. Identification of the site for the police facility is identified by City Council. The use of the bond funds shall include site acquisition and development of a police facility and related costs. Related costs include site acquisition and preparation and abiding street improvements. Any bond savings realized after completion of the police facility may be used for renovation and improvements to the space at the specific center to be vacated by the Police Department. An estimate of the effect of the measure on the property tax liability for a representative residential property owner in terms of dollars per thousand of assessed value, a per month and a per year estimate for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, and that the facility will be approximately one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet of building area and include the Willamette Valley Communication Center.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved, it's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Dickey. Is there discussion? Is there discussion? Counselor McCoy?
I've been serving here since January of two thousand and fifteen. I've literally been working on this since January of two thousand and fifteen, as the mayor placed me on the Blue Rhythm Task Force and then co-chairing this council committee dealing with this. So I am absolutely, if I were a citizen and knew how thoroughly this was vetted, I would feel very, very good about the decision that's being made. We've got all the, all the information we could possibly have asked for and looked at it from every different angle that we could look at. And I am convinced that what I just moved at eighty-two million, the Full Meal Deal, which is an ex, you know, leader of the restaurant industry in the state of Oregon, I sort of like that title. I'm convinced that a Full Meal Deal is the way to go. I think it serves the city the best. It's going to allow the Police Department to grow in that, and stay in that facility for thirty or forty or more years. I think it's in an area that it's, it should be in. I think the call center should be there after we fully vetted that. My only frustration is it's taken as much time as it has, but I'm certain that this has been vetted. So let's get on to it and get this thing passed in November.
All right. Other comments? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at the last bullet on remaining funds.
Yes.
And I know we've spoken of potential cost to renovate the vacated portion. Is there potential to have an excess of contingency funds that would exceed the cost of renovating that? And in that case, could you just not necessarily save the vacated space, which would allow then that money to be used to reinforce other areas inside of City Hall, which could then go towards seismic as well?
Well, setting aside the portion of the question regarding the amount remaining, certainly the use of whatever remains is a policy decision for City Council.
Because if it's limited, the way it says here, either I have to drop money that's not necessarily needed into the police facility, or put more into that vacated space than what it would potentially need, but you're restricted to that.
However, if you don't list what
If you don't list, you can't use it for it. So.
And also, the space vacated by the Police Department could include the parking spaces that are vacated, and the parking structure does need, does need work as well. So wouldn't necessarily just be the office space that was vacated?
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't spend money irresponsibly if we, we've done great on the last several bonds in regards to how the market is and the amount of funds that we have remaining at the end of that project. And I know we have to be somewhat conservative in that budgeting, but I just want to make sure we have, if this goes forward, the most flexibility to use that, especially for seismic, because there is going to be another bond measure that comes through for seismic. And it would be nice to have that capability to use that if, in fact, we pull this off and end up with significant savings.
Counselor McCoy, I think you're trying to say something kind of related to that, and then we'll go with Counselor Benjamin.
Related to this, I guess if that wasn't in there at all, what would happen to any savings?
If there's no savings clause, so to speak, it would be return to the taxpayers. You would never bond for it.
Counselor Benars.
So both those items are actually what I was covering. Being an expert, I guess, at thirty-five years in real estate investments, not development, but investments, it is very normal for, when tenants leave a building, and I realize that the city of Salem owns the current police facility, but it's very normal to have to return the facility to the condition in which they rented it or they moved, when they first moved in. And that's an industry standard. And I know police is different than this. This is a public facility, but it just makes the logical sense, if there are savings, that the police return the facility that they have been occupying for the last thirty, forty years, I guess it's forty years, to the condition which they found, which would at least mean new carpet and that kind of thing, which this is appropriate, to me, an appropriate use of the money.
All right. Other comments, counselors? Counselor Dickey and then Counselor Lewis.
Thank you. I just did want to say, I am really happy to support this, this motion because, I mean, having been here when we were having those early discussions, when we were having those early work sessions, and we were throwing around a lot of different ideas about what to do with the Civic Center, what to do with the police facility, where is it going to go? And, you know, at that time, if we would have said, hey, let's plow ahead in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, I'm not sure we would have gotten to where we are now, where we have spent so much time looking at this, not just this council, but, I mean, that Blue Ribbon Task Force was really representative of all sectors of our community. And you guys spent a lot of time working through a lot of these issues before it even got to us, which I really appreciated because, you know, I just felt like that perspective was so important for tonight, to be able to make the decisions that we're making. So I'm, I'm not happy that we've had to wait so long, because I think the need has been there for so very long, which is why we've been talking about it ever since I sat here. But I know many, many, many years before that, that had still been a discussion. But I believe we're going to get the best result out of what we have before us today.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Well, I got my question answered, and that is, if you don't identify where extra money goes, you don't get it. So that's, that's good enough for me. I can now support the motion as, is on the floor. You know, I'm going to say, the February twenty-ninth meeting, when the discussion was on the sighting, I wasn't here, but I watched on TV, and I've never been so proud of a group. And I feel that same way tonight. I think that this process has taken too long, but then I don't remember when the city ever broke any speed records. But it had rather too much time than not enough. And I believe the citizens are ripe to be educated. I recognize it's going to be a hard four months, but quite frankly, let the campaign begin.
Thank you. Counselor Benars, followed by Counselor Anderson.
So Monday evening, this past Monday, we passed the Salem city budget. And included in the Salem city budget was an inclusion of one point seven million dollars to be spent on the fire department, most likely to go to open the fire station in the northeast Salem. We spoke eloquently, I think it was Counselor McCoy that spoke most eloquently about, about the, if there's one job we have as a city council, it's public safety. Yes, we have streets, yes, we have water, and we have other things that we have to concern ourselves with. But public safety is a huge factor of what we have to be concerned about. And this is just yet another conversation, just as we had on Monday, when we're talking about a police, in my mind, or even in worse shape than the fire has ever been. And we really owe our citizens, not the police, but our citizens, the best officers, so that they can do their job and be proficient and do the right thing, that evidence isn't stacked upon evidence, that men and women can work and not have to bump into each other or share six people to the same desk. This is, this is not very practical for a community of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, a thousand people. And I very much support this motion as it is at this point. And I think it's a good thing for this community. I think we have work ahead of us for the next four months, but I think this is a very good thing for the community and the right thing to do.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I move to amend the motion, to change it so the total cost not to exceed the amount of seventy thousand, five-hundred-fifty thousand dollars, the difference to be made by removal of the Willamette Valley Communication Center from the building.
Is there a second?
I have another motion then.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
I move to remove the second-level parking and replace those parking spaces with dedicated spaces at the Marion Parkade.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I don't think I'll make a third motion. I do want to say, though, that I appreciate the work the police do. I fully appreciate the need they have, and I have no doubt that we need a new station and we need to move forward.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Benjamin, and then Counselor Nanki.
Trying to go through this and cut off certain parts of the project, maybe even make the building smaller, trying to save money, really hurts us in the long run for growth of the community, the growth of the police station. And so it makes sense to me that it should be a green facility, if you will, energy efficient. It should have plenty of parking for its needs, not to be expanded into other areas. Because once you start hobbling stuff together, it gets to be a big mess. And understanding moving forward that the WVCC needs to be with the Police Department for the reasons stated tonight in regards to security, cost effectiveness moving forward, I'll be voting for moving forward and getting this out to the people to understand that, you know, I own property in Salem, too. So I got to pay property taxes and understanding that, you know, it's not really going to affect it that much, if any, from what I understand. And moving forward, I just think that's a great deal, a great deal, to get exactly what's needed for now, twenty, thirty, forty years from now, as opposed to just trying to hobble stuff together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My final time speaking here tonight. Just wanted to touch briefly on government, which was designed to move slowly, knowing that, you know, there's a very limited amount of time prior to November seventh. And in starting some preliminary discussions on communications and educating the public, I think we can get there. And I think once that is in front of them, they will choose to support this. That being said, we need to get it the heck out of and away from us so that those members of the public that are willing to go out there and lobby for this, as well as the city to provide that factual information. But we need to get government out of the way here of moving forward very quickly on this. And you can't move forward until you got something in front of you that's passed through the legal process. So I'm voting in favor to move with all haste.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I've said a few times in this council session that, not the session, but in my term on the council, that as a lawyer, I appreciate process. And my view of the political governmental process is that if there is a process and that process is followed, the end decision is followed, the end decision, while it might not be a decision that I would appreciate from the beginning or want from the beginning, just the fact that it goes through the process ends up with a better decision. So I will be supporting this motion. I wish my amendments would have passed, but I also understand that it is important for the council to be unanimous in its decision here. You know, I think that many of the issues that have been raised during this whole process have been answered and dealt with by the city staff, not all of them, but enough of them, that I say this is a process that has proceeded and has now come to its end, and we need to move forward.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to add my two cents, and that is that I have very much appreciated the diligent work that our community has done on this issue. I very much appreciated the fact that as we built the Blue Ribbon Task Force, every person I telephoned personally and asked, or met with personally and asked to serve on it, said yes, and I very much appreciated the hours that they spent and the hours that staff have devoted to this very, very important process. And I'm very much in favor of this motion. I'll be supporting this motion. I'll be out campaigning on the doorsteps of this city, because I believe strongly that this new facility is the right facility, it's the right size, it has the right components, and it's just exactly what the citizens of the City of Salem deserve in having a really fine public safety facility, so that they can be kept safe in their community under even maybe the most extreme circumstances. So I'm happy to be supporting this motion tonight. Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Question on timing. With this motion, if it passes, when would that resolution be back before the council, and at that time, a passage of the resolution, staff will then be essentially silenced, to a large extent, save for said factual information?
So the first question is, we would most likely bring the resolution back for adoption on June 27.
When Dan says most likely, that means only if there was some unforeseen event that would occur between now and the 27th. We will have it before you on the 27th.
No, no, thank you. The second piece of that is there's a state law that prohibits public employees from political campaigning. That law doesn't take effect till the measure's actually been certified. So we will go through the resolution. I will then draft the ballot title with the help of our bond counsel, and then, once that's been certified and it's a true measure, then the restriction applies, and we will be working with staff on making sure everyone knows the rules on that.
And certified as by the Secretary of State?
The county clerk.
County clerk.
All right. We are ready. There is a motion on the floor. The motion was made by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Dickey, and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Casilla, absolutely. I would like to propose a motion at this time. We have talked long and seriously about seismic retrofitting of the Civic Center, of the shops, of the various areas of the city, the library, and my motion is actually, I move to direct staff and the public, to move staff to update the Public Workshop's complex 2003 master plan on recommendations on how best to address seismic and building conditions for current and future uses on that site, and also direct that an updated analysis of the Civic Center and its library and all other city-owned property, including Center 50 Plus and the parking structures, be completed to provide recommendations for the necessary improvements and costs.
Second.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved by me and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Thank you. And discussion, I will defer to Counselor Lewis.
Just one question for staff. As a practical matter, how soon could it be brought back?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
As a practical matter, how soon could staff bring back information?
Anticipating some interest in having a better, more precise timeframe from the timeframe that was provided previously. Alan has done some research and has a schedule or timeframe for you.
Sure. And I guess I'll just note, it's just been preliminary conversations with some folks who do this kind of work, and there's a few things. So one, the shops' master plan, I think you're probably talking about six to 12 months to really fully go through that process. The Civic Center, in an ideal world, it would be faster, but I think six months is probably the minimum, just because it's right in the middle of summer and everybody's busy with construction right now. We do have a model of the facility that we can start with, so we aren't starting from scratch there. The other city facilities, I haven't thought about in as much detail, but I think those would probably come a little bit after those first two work items.
All right. Other questions with regard to my motion? Counselor Benars?
We talked about time, but we didn't talk about costs. Any idea what this would run?
So the master plan, rough estimate, probably $80,000, and this facility, somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000, to update the model and look at the current state of it.
And the last time the shops were done was 2003? Is that what I heard?
2003 was the comprehensive master plan. At one time, there was a slight update to that to look at building a new operations building out there.
The building here is old. The building over at the city shop is antiquated compared to this. Yeah, old and decrepit.
All right. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, for the sake of giving the city an opportunity to show that it really can go fast, I'd like to amend the motion and add a provision that there will be as complete a report as possible before the end of this calendar year.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Anderson for expediency in the assessment of the seismic needs and the report to come to council by the end of 2016. All right. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I would say, to my way of thinking, although they're all important, the most important would be the Civic Center here, and I would love to see that report as soon as possible, and if it's possible before the end of the year, that'd be terrific. And I would urge that the staff work on that, that one first, as opposed to spending time among everything.
And you include the library when you say Civic Center?
Yes, yes. I mean, the whole complex. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Counselor Benjamin?
Well, I too would like to see things done sooner than later, but just to make sure that they had already mentioned that there's a lot of these people that are already out on projects right now, and so to pull them off those projects, you're going to have to wet their whistle a little bit, and that's kind of where we not want to go. Just want to make that aware.
Thank you. Yes?
If I may, I'll remind the council that in the budget that you're considering on the 27th, we do have some funding already for this type of work, so that might perhaps lessen that concern about the need to pay a premium in order to meet a very aggressive timeframe. And on that, certainly, if the sense of council is to focus on the City Hall and library, we will do that. I just want to make sure that's the sense of council, and we will proceed with that direction.
I see heads nodding. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, and kind of in that same vein, looking at city engineers' heads moving around as well, some of that staff time will be the same. So as far as here, putting together a contract at this building, this building, this building, will all be the same. It would be those items where staff time would be preferential. I think it would be the will of council to direct that more towards this and come up with that report prior to the other as well. Knowing that, depending on what we're going to do, that would just tell us what the cost, if we're going to move forward with some kind of a bonding structure for down the line, you need the entire number.
Absolutely.
But we really need to understand what that cost is here, and I think from that, we'll be able to kind of start extrapolating, and we'll have enough information moving forward where we'll have a good idea of where we're going to end up. But, yeah, we need to know a real number for the civic complex first.
Absolutely. Counselor Benars?
So I will be supporting this amendment to the motion, and my logic is, yes, I too want to speed this on. We've been pushing this can or kicking this can down the road for a while at this point. On the other side, the flip side, and what makes me say no, is I want to make sure that there's enough time to do the due diligence that needs to be done. I suspect, at least within the Civic Center, we have a lot of the work that has already been done that they can build upon, but if the report is short, let's say, at one end or the other, I just want to make sure at the end of this year that we know that where it's short, so that we can make sure that we fill in those blanks. But I really would like to get this going, because this is an important issue.
Thank you. I will speak to the amendment to my motion, and I agree. It's time. It's just time to speed things along and get these figures together and truly understand what is out there for us with regard to the next step in our civic responsibility, which is the safety and security of the entire civic campus and all city buildings, and ensuring as much as we can the safety of all those who occupy the buildings, staff and visitors. So the motion on the floor is to, as I indicated, direct staff, excuse me, to the amendment is to direct staff to see to it that we have an assessment to provide recommendations on how to best address seismic and building conditions deficiencies, and that has to do with the Public Works, shops, and the civic complex as a priority. Does that sound correct in the-
Amendment was by the end of 2016.
And the amendment, and by the end of 2016?
Which is what we're voting on right now?
Which is what, right, right, right. All right. All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. That motion carries, and then we're back to the original motion?
The motion as amended?
The motion as amended is-
Which you just stated.
Is what I just stated. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Is there any other further business that councilors would like to bring before us tonight? All right. Hearing none, we are adjourned.